Are we good? Recording? Good afternoon. Let's get started with the special board meeting today. It's November 19th, 2025. Time is 4:01 PM. Roll call, please, Ms. Adad.
Here.
Director Carey?
Here.
Director Haley?
Here.
Director Huber?
Here.
Director Jurgensen?
Director Jurgensen will be joining remotely at some time during this meeting, so keep an eye out for him.
Director Malpackham?
Here.
Here.
Six board members present in person in the boardroom, and Director Jurgensen should be joining the meeting at some point in time remotely. And I do want to give a thank you to Ms. Katrina Adad for stepping in today to facilitating, to help facilitate this meeting today as Ms. Olson is out of town. Appreciate you stepping in. Please join me as we observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Director Carey, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education adopts the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Huber?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion has been, the agenda has been adopted as presented. So sometimes things come up at a board meeting and people are called upon without any advance notice. So I don't have anybody to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So I looked at Ms. Leanne Baca Bartlett, and she is one of the board candidates that is quote-unquote elected to serve until the ballots are officially certified. Ms. Baca Bartlett, would you be willing to lead the board in the pledge of allegiance? Right at the top up here. You can come up here. Whenever you, yeah.
Did you just say it?
You just start.
Just start, just start.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I didn't want to put you in this part, but you never know what comes up at a board meeting, so you were called upon, so you are prepared now. Thank you. Appreciate it. The first item on the agenda is a special report. This information is presented to the board annually. This is pertaining to the annual financial audit and the report that comes along with it. Superintendent Call, I'm going to turn it over to you to set this up.
Yeah, I'm super excited for Dr. Comfort and the team, Chris Baker here, as well as our auditors, to go over the results. You know, when we go through election seasons, you hear the things that people are concerned about. And I heard a lot about fiscal transparency. And I promise people there's, there's nothing going on. And we have an audit here to show you how transparent we are and how tight we are and how it's better than it's ever been. So, Dr. Comfort?
There you go.
Good evening, Board. As the superintendent said, we are presenting this year's financial audit. I'll give a few pieces of information before I turn it over, but first wanted to do a few introductions of some people that might be new to the board. We've, we have two new leaders in our finance team that started at the beginning of this fiscal year. So we have our Executive Director of Finance, Mr. Chris Baker, and then his Director of Financial Services, Jared Hoogstein. They're here this evening, as well as the primary lead for the audit firm, Forvis, Forvis that we partner with, Steve Sauer. He'll do the presentation tonight. He'll kind of talk you through all of it. But I just want to give a few kind of high-level comments first. As the superintendent said, we are going to bring you the cleanest audit that we have in the last number of years. At this point, there are no major findings. That's, that will be the first time in a number of years that we've had no major findings. A few things that are different that I just want to be transparent with the board about. We typically bring you two pieces of the audit. We bring you the, what we call the ACFER, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Review, or the kind of primary audit for the district. We will be bringing that to you tonight. And we also typically bring you a single audit, which is more program-specific. In the past, we've evaluated ESER programs, grant programs, food nutrition services. That is still on hold, not with anything having to do with District 11. This is related to the extended government shutdown. And every year, they have to re-establish a rule set for single audits. That has not been completed yet. And so while we've gone through the audit and there has been no findings, we can't officially bring you the single audit yet until the federal government releases that rule set. Mr. Sauer will speak that to you tonight, or speak about that a little bit to you in a bit. Also, you'll see that our primary audit is still in draft form. That's because they're still doing kind of, the Forvis, the auditing group, is still doing their secondary review. We expect no changes to anything. But because this is the board that oversaw the implementation of those funds, I wanted to make sure that this was the board that got to hear about the audit. And so that's why you will see that it is in draft. It will fully release next week or the week after. Again, we don't expect any changes. And are just very excited about the audit we're going to bring to you tonight. It can be a little challenging to transition financial leaders. One financial leader oversaw the spending of funds, and another financial leader is going to oversee the audit. And I'm incredibly grateful to Chris and Jared for their work in partnership with Forvis to again bring you a wonderful audit. It will be the best in my tenure in District 11. And so I will turn it over to Steve, and he'll walk you through, and then we'll both be here for any questions you may have.
Good evening. Thank you. Great to be here. Not every day that an auditor gets to bring a bunch of good news. Not sure we're known for that, so I appreciate the setup here and a pleasure to be presenting with you. Slide deck here is, is meant to be somewhat holistic but high-level, and I'll try to stay at that, but certainly welcome questions as I go. Couple of things. This was our seventh year performing the audit for the district. We began in 2019. We have a 10-year contract with the district. However, it is our third firm name. So we've had three names over the last seven years. Several mergers have changed some things. However, the team is exclusively local. We're just down the street. So get to collaborate with your team, come on-site. And of course, they do a terrific job providing all the information that we request, which is somewhat comprehensive if you ask them, so. Up on screen, a couple of different things. Again, just high-level summary of the audit. Big picture is that the scope that you see there on the left largely unchanged from previous years. There's a number of different standards that we would get to work within. None of that has changed. A couple of changes to the standards themselves, I'll get to that here in a few minutes, but overall, the scope of our engagement, very similar to what the district has had in the past. Third bullet point down there on the left, you'll see mention of some charter schools. Certainly, there are charter schools that are affiliated with the district. And there were a couple of changes with respect to those charters. Some that rolled off, several new charters that were approved during 2025. Those create some financial reporting disclosure changes, as you would guess, but all that is relatively standard in the school district space. And we do a lot of work within the school district space. So you'll see a couple of names there, some additions, some, some removals, but again, relatively standard in the school district operating space. Very last bullet there, bottom left, you'll see that the report, once it is finalized and provided to you all, does contain both audited and unaudited information. And you may kind of scratch your head like, wait, I thought the whole thing was audited. Well, it is wrapped in one document, but that document contains multiple different pieces, some of which we look at at different levels than others. Again, no changes there, no, no, nothing specific to D11, more related to the standards that we work within. But lots of information included in that packet, some of which is audited, some of which is just included by your team to provide more context to those financial statements. There in the middle, you'll see mention of significant accounting policies, and that was the one change we had this year with respect to what we call GASB 101. This statement related to compensated absences, or sick leave, so to speak. In years past, it's been more of a disclosure item. This year, the standard setter, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, required that that sick leave amount be recorded on your statements, actually recorded as a liability on your statements. So that added about a $5 million liability to the government-wide balance sheet, which again is relatively boilerplate, relatively standard in the school district space. But a new, a new standard, a new, some new rules you comply with, and of course, some new disclosures in that comprehensive financial report, once that is available. Next slide here really identifies just some key areas of focus for our audit. The document itself is about 170 pages or so. So there's certainly areas of emphasis that we have greater than others, and this would be a real good list of what some of those areas of emphasis are. I'll just point out three. There on the top, on the left side, at the very top, you'll see valuation of investments. The district holds a number of investments primarily with, with governmental, local government investment pool, similar from, from previous years. Third bullet down, you'll see useful lives of capital assets. The district has been updating and renovating a number of different facilities over the last several years. So that's always a big area of focus for us, ensuring that those amounts, those disclosures are, are consistent and appropriate. And then third bullet from the bottom left, you'll see pension and other post-employment benefits. This is para and the health plan component to para. And if you've looked and spent some time in the documents, you'll see those have some pretty big implications to your statements. So anyway, a number of pages and disclosures are related to that. But those three really comprise about 80% of your government-wide balance sheet. So a lot of numbers, a lot of, a lot of activity there in just those three bullets, but certainly an area of focus for us each year. On the right side, you'll see just a short list of disclosures, areas that may be of interest to you or to folks that happen to pick up your report, not areas of concern, simply areas that may drive more interest or questions than others. And the only addition to that list there on the right side is the very last bullet, the change in reporting entity. This relates to the additions and the removals of the charter school, what you call component units to, to the financial statements. Because the district is financially responsible for those, those charter schools, they're included in your report. And anytime there's additions or subtractions, it creates what's called a change in reporting entity. So, so something new for this year, but again, pretty standard in, in the district space. Continuing on, probably the biggest question you may be asking is, okay, how, how do the numbers look? Were there any changes that, that came up as part of the audit? And this slide really answers that question. The, the short answer to that question is no. The, the numbers that are reflected in the annual comprehensive financial report are going to be the same as what the team has formally reported to the board. And that is pretty incredible, for there to be no changes to the numbers as a result of the audit. Lots of information, lots of activity, lots of things to track there. And team did a very, very incredible job in managing all that. One item that, that was a little bit of a topic of conversation was retainage. You'll see there on the left side of the screen. Retainage is unbilled amounts related to your contract or invoices. If you look on the right side, you'll see similar type of conversation the year before. Because the district has been doing a number of construction projects, retainage and those billing, the timing of billing is, is, can be somewhat tricky. Look at the dollar amount, relatively minor. But, but again, that was really the, the main topic of conversation related to the, the dollars, the amounts that are, that are in the report. This is probably my, my all-time favorite slide here in, in the deck. Really presents somewhat of a high-level picture of the last three years of our audits. And to Dr. Comfort's comment, this is really what we're pretty excited about in terms of results. You look at 2025, and we, there, most of those areas of deficiency You look at 2025 and we, there, most of those areas of deficiency, we have no comments. No, no concerns, no findings. The only item there on, on the left, left side just relates to that audit, that retainage adjustment that I spoke to. But if you compare 2025 to 24 and 23, you'll see a number of, of other conversations that have come up over those last two years of audits. This year, pretty benign. So given the change in, in the team and the, the, kind of change of the guard, in pretty incredible results from a financial perspective, which is great. And finally, last slide, won't spend a lot of time here, but there were a couple of, of significant changes to the financial statements, which again, you'll see when that report is finalized. Probably the biggest is simply the, just budget to actual changes within your general fund. Salaries, instruction costs went up quite a bit this year for 2025, as you know, as expected. Those amounts were less than budget and so it, it came in well, well under that. But that is really the, the primary talking point when you look at the district as a whole and the big changes from last year to this year. New construction renovation, a new standard with a new liability related to your sick time. And then just the implications in the general fund related to spending, albeit primarily instruction and salaries, so. So all in all, very, very clean bill of health, not a lot of concerns here. Dr. Comfort already mentioned the single audit report that is to come. We're still waiting on the finalized report from the federal government to, to release the rules. But that is for every June 30 year-end organization, not, not, it's not District 11-specific. Every organization is, is waiting on these rules and thus waiting on the release of their single audit report. So that, that is to come. The follow-up question is always, when do we think that's going to be? And that, that is undeterminable. Many of us think it'll probably be Q1 of 2026. So it could be a couple of months yet until those rules come out. Speculation, but it could, could be a little bit, so. But again, yeah, great, great results, positive results. And do want to just express my gratitude to the team, do a phenomenal job. Great working with them and it's been, it's been a good, a good process. So that, let me pause. Yeah, any, any questions? We're happy to turn it back over.
Great. Dr. Comfort, you have anything to add? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you guys did. Vote, comments or questions? I don't see any comments or questions. I think your overall summary that you captured out there, that this was a clean bill, that is really assuring and promising, so thanks for going through that audit. Do we still do individual school audit? We do. Is that something that's ongoing or is that covered in the report?
I apologize for.
Okay.
Yes, we do have a, a schedule. But then at any time, a area superintendent or a principal can request. My team has been doing a few of those at the request of, of senior leaders across the district. But yes, we do have every school on a schedule where every couple of years, we do an internal audit.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming and making that presentation and sharing the good news with the rest of the community.
Absolutely. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we do have public comments today on the items that are on the agenda. And I have one public comment here. And the name of the person I'm going to read out, just to make sure if that person is still in the room or isn't in the room at all. Devin Chetron. Devin Chetron. Okay. I don't see anybody here, so. Public comments was on the action item, on the agenda items that was on the agenda today. And since there are, the person who signed up for the public comment is not present, Devin Chetron, if you are listening, you are more than welcome to send your comments through an email to the board. Moving on to the action agenda items on, action agenda item on today's agenda. It's policy IJL instructional, instructional materials and library resources, selection, adoption, acquisition and reconsideration. Director Huber, can you please make the motion for action item D1?
I move the board of education adopts the revision of policy IJL, special materials, library resources.
Selection, adoption, acquisition and reconsideration.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. To give some context to the community and where we are at, at this point in time. This item has come in several prior board meetings, starting in October. It came as a work session agenda item and then followed by coming to a board meeting as a non-action agenda item. Some recommend, it also went through legal counsel for legal review. And then based on the recommendations that were made by legal counsel and some of the feedback we received from the community as well. The initial policy, policy IJ, was separated into two different policies. Policy IJ and policy IJL. Policy IJ specifically deals with instructional materials. Policy IJL is on library resources and materials. Policy IJ was adopted by the board after discussion at the November 5th board meeting. Policy IJL is up in front of the board today as an action agenda item. Did I capture that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The last time we discussed this policy IJL, the board agreed that Director Jorgensen and Director Art would collaborate on the language in the policy and bring that revised policy after those changes have been put into place that both Director Jorgensen and Art agreed on. And that's the policy that's in front of the board for consideration at this point in time. Is Director Jorgensen is still not with us, is he? Okay. So the policy has undergone several revisions along the way. After the board got feedback from the community through email, listening to public comments that took place over several, couple of board meetings as well, based on the feedback, based on board discussion, based on legal counsel input, based on our board member interaction with members in the community, including district staff. Director Bankers and I got to meet that I shared with you with the Saban Middle School LTE. So we, as a board, appreciate all the feedback and those feedback was taken into consideration with the policy that's in the front of the board. Okay, Director Art also made. Yeah, I'm sure other board members met with individual community members as well. So Director Art, I'm going to, since you worked with Director Jorgensen on this, could you give a summary as to where the policy is at this point in time?
Thank you. Yes, and I will note though, just so the public knows why I'm going to say what I'm going to say. And, and to reiterate for the board, an email I sent yesterday evening. When Director Jorgensen and I were working together, we did expect that we were going into a work session with this and that we would be able to rehash some of the details. So what you see is mostly, since, since I didn't get to talk to him after the very last edit, it's mostly what we had left after that last conver, or last text or email. And there were still things to be brought forward to you that he and I may have differed on. I think we've, I've narrowed it down to a few items. But what, we were not able to discuss the last couple of options that I emailed you about. So there are a few things I will propose to you to gauge your interest. First, I'm curious, because the policy was worked over so much, and I have to say, this is not the same policy at all that you saw when they, when we were first approached with policy IJ. So significant differences there in dividing the two policies. So I'm curious if you have any questions about the existing policy first.
Okay, so is it fair to summarize that the policy that's in front of the board at this time? And I think it's pulled up on the screen in the boardroom as well. If you can, just adapt, just make it a little bigger. So the community can read it if that's possible. This version of the policy, is it fair to say that both you and Director Jorgensen agreed on? And that's the version that is there at this time?
It's very close.
Okay, great. Okay, and then you may have additional feedback or changes that you want there, which is what you emailed the rest of the board.
Yes.
Yesterday.
Yes, and I was, did not, there's only one of them that I was able to run by Director Jorgensen.
Okay.
He had, to be fair, he hasn't seen those. And that's means he has no objection and he has no approval because he just hasn't seen them.
Well, just so for your awareness and the board's awareness, I briefly connected with Director Jorgensen earlier this afternoon. He said that he would be joining remotely today. I'm still waiting for him to join at some point in time. That's my understanding of that as well, that from what he shared with me, this is the work that both, both of you did together. Before coming to the board for questions, Dr. X was also involved in this. Dr. X, you need to add anything to this? You facilitated that conversation between Director Jorgensen and Director Art.
I think the, or what was agreed upon by the groups, or by the team that was tasked with looking at it, the reorganization and the structure that you see now is, is kind of where we ended up in the conversation. I think Director Art has that correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that vote, any comments or questions? First on the policy that's there in front of us. And then we can talk about the revisions that Director Art is going to propose. Director Carey.
I'll just very briefly say, I think you and Jason did a good job with this. In particular, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a series of bullet points underneath the kind of description of the charge to the superintendent. One of the things that I remember talking about, I think when we first brought this up during a work session, was that there were aspects about the tasking of the superintendent that I found unclear. And I think that section reads very well. So I would say good job to both of you and Jason.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think those are the bullet points that are in front of the screen right now. No, no further questions from you, Director Carey?
No further questions.
Okay. Director Huber.
Director Art, can you tell us a little bit more about that process?
Of the, the communications, et cetera. Well, I received the, the documents from, Dr. X was able to just go through, insert some things that were from the CASB conversation. I proposed some things from the current policy IJL. And then unfortunately, Director Jorgensen and I never actually were able to have a conversation because he was two hours off of our current time zone. And so there's some back and forth by email and text. In the end, sorry, I've just received a note, there's no sound on the video for our meeting.
The live stream is working, YouTube's there working on right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. They're working on it. So the, in the end, there were, there was a suggestion he had that I incorporated. And so, you know, ideally, that is something he wanted in there. But again, it was unable to confirm exactly. But I think we're on the right track. And lots of comments back and forth. He deleted some of the stuff he didn't like, which is also one item I'm, I'll be bringing up yet tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Huber. Are you good? Okay, I don't see any other questions from the board members. So with that feedback from the board, I think the board is comfortable with the policy that's on the front of us at this point in time. And I'll defer back to you as far as the revisions you want to suggest.
Thank you. So I did come, for those who aren't like privy to our, this particular email yet, everything's core requestable though. I did send the board last night three suggestions. And if you are generally in approval of them, I'm prepared to make the amendment suggestions. As well as if you'd like two of them or one of them, we can move forward. The first one was to add the word inclusive. Let's see, on the third bullet here, so it starts with the district. Nope, that's not.
Could you?
Sorry, that's not.
At the top of the page, top of the page. No, no, no. Yes, there, there, there. Yes.
Okay, so on the third bullet, bullet, it says to maintain a balanced collection with a diversity of perspectives. Our current IJL is, definitely calls out that there are people who are not represented typically or who have been marginalized or underrepresented. And Director Jorgensen had concerns about that. So to make it maybe a more positive spin, I would propose that we add the word inclusive so that it reads to maintain a, an inclusive, balanced collection with a diversity of perspectives.
Okay, let's go one at a, one at a time. Board, Director Art has a suggestion toward the, to add the word inclusive in front of balanced. Any thoughts or feedback on that? And I see Director Bankers first.
When I read through this before I looked at the proposed revisions, I thought that in this particular bullet point, that it carried the intent of what we want to be able to see in our libraries. When I looked at the suggestion to include inclusive, I found that to be redundant. To maintain a inclusive and ballot, an inclusive balanced collection to me sounds redundant. Balanced means that we're going to provide viewpoints that encompass the history, the perspectives, the people who have made a difference. And books that give children an opportunity to expand their experience without actually actively performing what they're reading. So I'm fine with balanced.
Okay, any other thoughts on it? Vote. Okay, I don't see anything else at this point in time. So leaving the adding inclusive at this time, that's the suggestion that came from Director Art. Is there, by a show of thumbs, support to move in that direction? Okay, I don't see any at this time. So moving on to the second item.
All right. The second one, let's see, I'm trying to make sure I didn't forget one here.
It's the fifth bullet point.
Yes, yes. So I would suggest that we change the word obscenities to obscene.
Okay.
I think it just flows better and so I'm proposing that.
So it'll read to ensure all media across the district is free of obscene and pornographic material. Is the board supportive of that adding?
I have a comment.
Okay, oh, I can see. I have Ms. Huber first and then, okay, go ahead, Ms. Bankers. Do you want, do you have a comment to make too? Okay, first banker, Director Bankers.
Okay, so again, when the first reading, I read it and it carried the intent, I think, of what we're trying to do here. When I read the suggestion to change it to obscene, then I had to spend some time thinking about the difference between using the word obscene and using obscenities. When we talk about reviewing books and what is it that we're going to make access, give access to our students, when in my view, in my thinking, to say it's obscene, to me, would take the totality of the material itself. To look at obscenities means to me that we To look at obscenities means to me that we would read, or take notice of, specifics within the context. And then having to draw back and take a look at, does, do the obscenities in a book, or a material, media, overshadow the content that we're trying to give access to our students? And when I think about some books that have been on the banned book lists across the nation, I think that some books were pulled because of one thing that was said. And I don't think that that is our intent here. I think our intent is to take context as well as specifics. So I like the word obscenities, in the sense that it gives us a specific, gives us specific discussion points when reviewing a book, or should a complaint come to us? As opposed to obscene, which would say the whole book, or the whole material is obscene, and therefore it would slip by us. And of course, I have stories, because I've been in education a long time. So I would like to leave obscenities, so that it is a specific, although our duty is to look at the totality of the material that's being presented to us. If that makes sense. It makes sense to me.
Okay. So from your perspective, there is a difference between obscenities and obscene?
Yes.
Okay. Director Huber.
Sorry, she just gave me a whole different list of things to think about. So I was just gonna say, we've had to, like, remove from our own personal collection.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Wanting more clarification on the differences between obscene and obscenities, but there we go.
What?
You.
Do you still want that? Or?
I didn't, I was asking, I mean...
I don't know what you said.
The difference between the wording of obscene and obscenities, just because those definitions were written out in the policy, right? So to me, what I've read for the policy stated what those differences were.
So if I'm hearing you right, you are asking Director Bankus, or Director Ott, at this time, any one of them to provide?
Director Ott.
Okay. To provide some clarity as to the differentiation in both those words?
Yes. I think that's what, I think that's what you're asking.
Okay. Is there anything you want to add to this, Director Bankus?
No.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Director Ott, is there anything you want to add?
I think, so when I first read this in its draft form, my concern is obscenities, I think commonly is just swear words. So we've gone to all the trouble to identify obscene, and list that as, well, a whole definition, right? And it's greater than just swear words. If we tried banning books that have swear words in them, in like, the high school curriculum, there's quite a few that would probably have to go. So if that's how we want, if that's what we want to go, you know, there's some classics that are gonna go by the wayside, too.
Well, and I think that's what I was, the point I was trying to make, that a cuss word here and a cuss word there, those are specifics, and they may not be acceptable language, but in the context, it doesn't overshadow the value of the book itself. And that's what I was trying to say when I talked about books being banned because they had a cuss word in there, or something gratuitous that didn't add to the context. But if it's interpreted as cuss words, that would be overreach, in my opinion.
Well, we just said, we have to ensure, that's what the bullet point reads, is to ensure all media across the district is free of obscenities. So that is why my suggestion is to replace it. You know, as far as repetitive and things being covered, honestly, the last bullet on this particular page is, "A library's resource shall not be obscene, as defined by law." So we already, we could take this whole bullet out, in theory, and just add the word pornographic, you know?
We could just take obscenities out and leave pornographic.
We could. I didn't come prepared to make that amendment, but I'm happy to. It's, if we say obscene, yes, it's repetitive, but at least it's a little more clear. We have to find it. I see Dr. X is coming to say something. If you, if you, just real quick, if you do a search on the word obscene versus obscenities, obscenity comes up as Wikipedia, "Any utterance or act that strongly offends the prevalent morality of the time." That's at least that first little sentence. I could dig in for you, but...
Yeah, I'm not gonna claim to be William Shakespeare, so I think obscene is the correct word here, because obscene is the adjective, which would describe the material obscenity would be a list, as mentioned, of specific things.
Well, we can take it out, because it's, as you note, it's in the back, it's in the last bullet point here.
Which would you prefer, Director Bankus? I'm easygoing.
What's that?
I'm easygoing on that. I'm happy to, you know, go either direction.
Yeah, I'm thinking about, thinking about words that would be considered inappropriate. That's not what I was thinking when I was thinking about obscene, and I'm not, certainly not giving any examples, so...
No, I am either.
I'm not doing that. And that would be overreach, so I withdraw. I withdraw my objection.
Okay. Could you pull that up, back to the top of the page? And I'm going to go to Director Carey. Thank you.
Just a very minor point. In the definition section, obscene is the specific word used, so I have, I have no objection to Director Ott's original suggestion.
Yep, I was going to state the same thing, but thanks for pointing that out. Director Huber, did you have something? I saw your button pushed.
Yeah, yes.
Go ahead.
I was gonna ask Dr. X to come up, so he did that before I could get to ask that.
Okay. You have a question for him? No, not at this time. Okay. So from this discussion, I gather, the board is, the board is supportive of changing that fifth bullet point to read, to ensure all media across the district is free of obscene and pornographic material. Okay, great. Okay. Back to you, to the last bullet point.
Thank you. And again, I regret that we have to have this conversation at the dais, but that's one of the side effects of moving something that I personally, at least, assumed we were gonna have one more opportunity for a work session for. Last one was to add a bullet, this would be from the current Policy IJL, which is, "To meet the needs of students according to both the stated needs of students and general understanding of students' interests." And that would go under the section titled, "Selection and Maintenance of Library Resources." Director Jorgensen did not think we needed that, and suggested we incorporate that elsewhere, which it is now incorporated as student interest in the first bullet. But I just wanna make the observation that in the current IJL, we reference student interests or student needs several times, and we barely touch on it here, within the selection and maintenance section. So I was hoping we could add that back, out of interest in engaging our students.
Okay, thank you. Any thoughts or feedback on that? From what Director Ott is sharing from the board dais, and also my conversation, independent conversation with Director Jorgensen, Director Jorgensen was not supportive of adding that bullet point. And the compromise of the middle ground that you both agreed on was to add, and student interest, to that first bullet point that is already in there. To meet needs based on academic content standards, educational curriculum, and student interest at this time. Okay?
I'm glad to know he approves.
Okay. Director Carey, you had something? I saw your button pushed.
You said it.
Okay, great. Okay. Is there support to add another bullet point with the language that Director Ott proposed at this time? Okay. I don't see a support for that, Director Ott. So the one word was to change obscenities to obscene.
Right. All right, so if you, oh, we need the motion, do we do the motion?
Yeah, is there, before we get there, I just want to make sure, if there is any further discussion about this from any other board member at this time, any further... Okay. You can go ahead and make that. Is it, okay if I come to you, Director Ott, to make the amendment to the motion?
We haven't voted on this yet, too, and you don't have to vote on it first?
That's what she's going to do. Okay.
Yes. I do want to note, as I look at the last Policy IJL, at the current one, I should say, and regarding the balanced collection versus the, like, inclusive collection, so I hope that the administration takes away that the thinking at this time from, at least some board members, is that balanced collection, with the diversity of perspectives, the balanced part includes maybe being inclusive. Originally, the bullet point, or the item number four from the current IJL, was to provide a balanced collection with a fair proportion of each type of material. Originally, they were speaking to presumably having videos, and books, and magazines. And it was, so a fair proportion of each type of material selected to meet the needs of the curriculum, the students, and professional staff. So it will be a new interpretation for balanced, to mean a diversity of perspectives and life experience. So just for your awareness. All right, that said, I move to amend the proposed Policy IJL by changing the word obscenities to obscene in the fifth bullet, under the section titled, "Selection and Maintenance of Library Resources."
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call on the proposed amendment first?
Director Carey?
Aye.
That's not Director Jorgensen, is it?
He just...
It is? Okay.
Hold up, voting? For school representatives?
Director Jorgensen, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know if you've been following this conversation and discussion, is there anything you want to add from your end? The motion that is on the floor, the initial motion on the floor was to adopt the policy as presented. Director Ott proposed three different revisions to the policy, and that was shared with the board in an independent email that came to the board last night. Hopefully, you got an opportunity to read that. The only agreement at this time from the board, or the consensus from the board, was to change the language obscenities to obscene. Do you have anything to comment on the process, and anything else that you want to share with the board at this time?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Director Ott and I didn't get a chance to connect on the phone, but we got some email communication, so I don't mind having a discussion, basically, with these motions.
Okay. Okay. So the motion that is on the floor at this time is with the amendment that Director Ott made to Policy IJL, changing the word obscenities to obscene in the fifth bullet, under the section titled, "Selection and Maintenance of Library Resources." That has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Huber?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpacken?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Okay, so that amendment that Director Ott suggested has been approved by the board. Now we come back to the, adopting the policy itself with the amendment. But before I call that motion, are there any feedback at this point in time from the board itself, before I call for that motion? Director Ott?
Thank you. So there's this debate, wanting these additional things that reference how this policy would be inclusive. I think I will vote for it, but I do hope that students' First Amendment rights, and the freedom to read, and have access to materials that engage them, is significant. And I hope that the takeaway still is that we would desire some inclusive materials, so that all children of, and representing their life experience and their interests is respected. I do appreciate, I will say to the entire board, and Director Jorgensen, that I appreciate the opportunity to rework this, and not just charge forward with what we had. I think it is a better product. Thank you.
Yeah. And I appreciate the collaborative work that both of you engaged in, and also all the community members that came in front of the board, had this public comments, and also invited some of the board members to participate in the conversation, one-on-one. So I appreciate everybody's input, and based on that input and feedback, we have, like Director Ott said, a better product. Director Huber?
Hello to the community that showed up tonight, and those watching from...
Could you speak on the microphone?
Hello to the community that showed up tonight, and those watching from home. I understand that there's tension regarding Policy IJL and Policy IJ. There was a state law that led to a need to change the policies, and with additional guidance from board members, there are further changes to that. First, I want to show you a picture my son drew for Veterans Day a few years back. He wrote, "I can read what I want." He was asked to make an art piece, to show which American freedom he values most. My husband and I are both veterans, and our entire home is full to the brim with books. You will not find a room in our home which is not overrun with them. These books span across ideologies, religions, races, and creeds. When it comes to censorship, we keep it to a minimum, but do protect our kids from explicit material, graphic violence, and themes that may encourage them to become bullies instead of protectors. We have had to remove books from our personal collections, even ones that would order through a subscription service for children. It was a joke book, and some of the jokes included content about people with disabilities. I won't repeat that joke here, but when it came to my eight-year-old in a subscription that we curated for him, even at that tender age, he realized it was offensive to people with disabilities. We also have a foster team, and she came home with a book that she bought that would not pass the litmus test for even the least restrictive of you. A few weeks ago, I sat in a work session with my fellow board directors and stated that in the past three years, books have been challenged in D11. While I was inaccurate with that statement, because in the past decade, there have been a handful of challenges, sometimes with books moving to a higher age group, sometimes with them being removed, and always with the parents having the option to not have their student read that particular material. To my knowledge, no book has been challenged in accordance with the policy in the last three years, although I may be mistaken and welcome correction. The policy and regulations, as they were previously, needed to be amended to make the process more transparent, and the expectations and resources clear. I do not harbor mistrust for LTEs. I think they do their best with the time available to them, and just like materials can get past me and my home of avid readers, they can get into a school library. If the issue here was a candle on a table in the book, as referenced at the last board meeting by an author, I would be opposed to that sort of censorship. To me, that's not what the issue is. The issue is that we must follow state law, protect students' rights to read, honor parents' rights to guide their own children, and ensure staff have clear processes they can trust. Policy IJL, as revised, attempts to do all of that at the same time. That means acknowledging multiple truths at once. The vast majority of our library materials are excellent, enriching, age-appropriate, and carefully selected. No system, whether at home or in school, catches everything perfectly every time. The fear is that we will begin banning books based on politics, identity, or personal discomfort. That is not a direction I support, or I think any of these other board members. The fear for some is the concern that without clearer guidelines, inappropriate materials might slip through, or parents won't know how to raise concerns. I understand these concerns. I believe we can address those concerns without restricting the fundamental freedom. My son so wrote about simply to read what we want.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Okay, if there are no further comments by the board, the motion that's on the floor at this time is to adopt Policy IJL with the amendment that the fifth bullet point, under "Selection and Maintenance of Library Resources," is now going to read, "To ensure all media across the district is free of obscene and pornographic..." all media across the district is free of obscene and pornographic material. That's the motion that is on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Huber?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Art? Aye.
The dais have it, the policy I J L has been adopted with that revision that was made. Thank you. We do have executive session today, and before we get into executive session, I do want to share a message with the community as well, and to give the board an idea of what's coming up over the next couple of weeks. Obviously, next week is Thanksgiving. Today, I was at Stratton Elementary, and several of our schools are celebrating Thanksgiving by providing Thanksgiving meals to our kids. It was really well done. Director Bankus was there, I think Director Art was there as well, and the food services put a really wonderful spread out there. It was delicious, and it was good to see several of our parents and community members participating as well, and I'm sure the kids enjoyed it. So from all of us on the board dais here, I want to wish our family, families and students a happy Thanksgiving next week. Hope all of you get some time off to enjoy with your respective families and come back the week after, fully recharged and refreshed, and with a lot of turkey to eat as well. As far as the board agenda goes, we won't have a board meeting next week. December 3rd is a normal board meeting, it's a regular board meeting. Initially, the plan was to have the new board members, if the elections are certified, to have the new board members, the three new incoming board members sworn in on that December 3rd evening. But from what I understand, the elections are, the margin between 3, 4, and 5 in the list is narrow, that this could automatically trigger a recount, and that recount process could potentially not be completed until early December. So we have to wait until we get those results from the clerk and recorder's office, which could be after December 3rd. If so, the plan is still to recognize our outgoing board members on that December 3rd board meeting, and then at a future meeting, possibly on December 10th, we would swear the new board members that are coming in. So I just wanted to share that with the community, so some of you, if you want to plan, plan accordingly. If you are going to be here, there is a possibility that if the elections are certified before December 3rd, both of those can happen on December 3rd. If not, December 3rd is one, and December 10th is another. Okay, with that, moving into executive session, you can remove that from the screen, Mr. Datt. Thank you for sharing that. Director Hayfley, can you please make the motion to move into executive session?
Yes, same.
Could you press the button again?
Okay, I'm, am I on?
Go ahead.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss legal advice per C R S 24-6-4024B, Particular Matter Litigation Update Regarding Colorado Civil Rights Division and Colorado High School Activities Association. Negotiations per C R S 24-6-4024E, Particular Matter Superintendent Contract and Evaluation, and Personnel per C R S 24-6-4024F, Particular Matter Superintendent Contract and Evaluation.
Okay. Moved and seconded?
Seconded.
Yeah, moved by Director Hayfley and seconded by Director Bankers. Director Art, you wanted to, you've got the button, okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you a heads up, I will be voting no on this, because I believe that we could have discussed the evaluation tool without having to go into executive session. Would you care to address why we are going into executive session for it?
Yeah, I'm happy to discuss this. This was discussed at the public meeting, I think, last week. It was suggested at that time. The tool involves specific dates in the superintendent's contract and at the superintendent's request, and according to legal counsel's advice, this is being discussed in executive session. Hopefully, that addresses your concern, Director.
I think it is a justification.
Okay.
That is, is legally available. Again, I think we could have addressed the most significant portion of this in an open meeting, but, you know, having a special meeting certainly allows us to do that. And I will acknowledge, of course, that we have the additional litigation to discuss. Thank you.
That comes in executive session.
Yes.
Always. With that, moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Huber?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Art?
No.
The board will move into executive session at this point in time to discuss the agenda items that are on the agenda, and if it is necessary, we will reconvene again. If not, we will dismiss from executive session. Thank you.